Check one, two, check two.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February 20th meeting of the City Council of Half Moon Bay. Please rise. A roll call.
Councilmember Kowalczek?
Here.
Councilmember Riddick?
Here.
Vice Mayor Rorbeck?
Here.
Mayor Penrose?
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the free will of our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Proclamation and presentations. We have a presentation this evening by the Big Lift. Good evening. I'd like to start with a video, please, and Jessica's been helping to set it up for me.
When I grow up, I want to be a patient. I want to be a child. I want to be a fireman. I want to eat anything I want to eat. My favorite thing at school is having food in my mouth. My favorite is Oreos and sandwiches. I know a couple different languages. I like doing math. One hundred plus one hundred makes two hundred. I know that Andrew lived in the desert a long time ago. My favorite thing to learn is story. My favorite book is Shark. I like doing yoga at school because of, you know, said. I like being at school. I hope just get ready. Outside to go to the big lift.
It really does take a village, doesn't it? I'm Elizabeth Shuck, the very proud and lucky coordinator of the Coastside Big Lift Collaborative. Members of our collaborative include our school district, the Cabrillo Education Foundation, our preschool partners, the Sheriff's Activity League, the Boys and Girls Club of the Coastside, Coastside Hope, volunteers in our community, and our business partners. We're part of, I'm proud because I am proud of the work that our collaborative is doing, and I'm lucky because after my retirement from the school district, I'm able to still help the children in our community. We're part of a larger initiative in San Mateo County, along with seven other communities supporting children in their communities who can't read proficiently. Let me give you a little background on Big Lift. Started in 2014, countywide and in our community, more than half of the third graders cannot read proficiently by third grade. The number's even staggeringly higher for those low-income children. Seventy-five percent of them can't read across the county. They are four times more likely to drop out of high school and be incarcerated. Although many children in our county have quality preschool and enrichment of many kinds that support them in brain development, over ninety percent of their development happens in those first five years, children from our low-income families don't have that same opportunity. They start already behind, and by third grade, they're very far behind their peers. If they're not up to par at third grade, they again are not going to be able to succeed and have the same opportunities in life. When they are growing up till third grade, they're learning to read, but after that, they're reading to learn. A fact that I didn't know until recently is that up until third grade, we're using English-Saxon language, and then after that, we're using Greek and Latin in our textbooks. So it makes a big difference of our proficiency. The Big Lift is a bold social venture funded by Silicon Valley Community Foundation, the County Office of Ed, the Social Innovation Fund, First Five, and other partners that are listed over here on our banner. We have several goals. One of them is to provide two years of quality preschool, three years of inspiring summer programs designed to end that summer learning loss that's typically two months, and to provide family engagement to support reading and regular school attendance. Through this initiative and support of our partners, we on the coast have been able to provide forty additional slots for preschool. We've been able to provide summer school programs for over two hundred children, and we work with parents on how to support their children at home. The Rand Corporation has been... Thank you. The data shows that the Big Lift kids are more prepared for kindergarten than their peers, and that they're gaining one to two months in the reading programs over the summer rather than that two-month loss. We want to galvanize the entire coast side around this single metric: getting at least eighty percent of our children reading proficiently by the third grade. Our collaborative has created a strategic plan for doing that. Former Mayor Riddick and current Mayor Penrose were part of the team that created this plan. We have three goals: the long-term sustainability of this literacy initiative, meaning continuing to find fun. The three goals of our strategic plan: that long-term sustainability. Now that the federal government has canceled the Social Innovation Fund, we need to be looking for other funds, and for the county, we're only about halfway to our goal for this five-year program. We also are required in our community to provide a cash match, and in the past, the Education Foundation has been able to do that. They may not be able to continue that. Aligning preschool through third-grade programs is our second goal, meaning we need to improve the quality within the classrooms, and we're working towards that. And the third is creating a publicity campaign to get everyone on the coast involved in this initiative. I'm here this evening as part of that publicity campaign to ask you, as our city council members and the public that's here with us this evening, to be ambassadors for this literacy initiative to ensure that all of the children on the coast side can read fluently by third grade. Some of the ways that people can help, they're very easy. You can read to your children at home. You can read to children at the library or at the schools, the local schools. You can volunteer at the library. You can donate children's books to any school or preschool or to the library or the little library like the one you have out front here in the building. You can become a reading tutor for one of the programs on the coast side. You can join our campaign, and if you'd like to and have time, you can participate in our monthly collaborative meetings. I brought some flyers with information on the Big Lift that each of you have and that there's copies over here on the table that has the information for contacting, people contacting wanting to volunteer. I do believe that if we all help, we truly could accomplish this goal, but it isn't for one group of people or another to accomplish it, it's for all of us. I read a quote from Anne Frank the other day that I think is pretty fitting for tonight: "How wonderful it is that nobody needs to wait a single moment before starting to improve the world." So thank you very much for continuing to be our ambassadors for this program, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
No question, just a comment. I think it's a wonderful program, and I personally would like to support it in any way that I can, and I intend to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. It's a wonderful program.
Thank you very much.
So when are your meetings?
Our meetings are the first Tuesday of every month at the School District Boardroom Office at 3 o'clock.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, it's time for mayor's announcements of community activities and community services. The first thing I'd like to do is remind everybody that yesterday was Safeguard Our Coast Day, and inform you that three years ago, Debbie Riddick, Councilmember Debbie Riddick instituted Safeguard Our Coast, so a thanks to you.
Thank you.
I also wanted to bring it, a heads-up to everybody, in March, we will be having the beginning of our retreat, which, the retreat is a time every year when the city council gets together with staff and the general public and figures out how we want to spend our money in the upcoming fiscal year, what our priorities are, our goals are, and how much effort we want to put into these. This year is going to be a little bit different. We're going to be having a meeting on a Saturday, a meeting on a Sunday, and a third meeting on a weekday night so that we can really get good vigorous input from the community. So please, spread the word. We'll have the dates for that coming up fairly soon. Thank you. There is nothing to report out from our recent closed session meeting, and we now have city manager updates to council.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have a couple this evening. We'll start with John Doughty.
We haven't been here in a while, so happy to come here and give you a quick update on the library. Everything is going quite well at the library. We were able to tour the library today with David and the mayor and the vice mayor, so that was great, and hopefully, other members of the council can, we can work through and arrange for those visits. So, to put it succinctly, I guess, we are really moving forward. This is the interior, the grand staircase area and interior, as well as the cedar siding is pretty much completed, so if you have a chance to drive by, you'll see a lot of work being done. This is kind of the second-floor grand room to the left, and just amazing, that's the elevator shaft right, right there, is what you're looking at. So that's basically the maker space and the teen room back, looking back in that direction. And then you have here just the interior, I'm trying to figure out where, I think that's the, an earlier picture with the office area for staff. So things are moving forward, and it will be sealed up in the very near future, all the windows in place, and they'll start working on drywall and all of the interior work to come. So basically, we are at 499 calendar days for the project, and utilized 359, so we've got 140 days left with substantial completion again set for the end of May, and construction completion roughly at the end of June, with an opening sometime July, late July, early August with all the shakeout and move-in that's needed with that. And so we've been fortunate in one respect that the dry winter has allowed us to continue to work through that time, and we're now at only eleven rain days out of thirty in the contract, so that means things have been able to move along quite well. Questions?
No, just a comment. Wonderful tour today. The library is so fabulous.
So I have a question. So can a copy of this present, can a copy of this presentation be made available to a Boy Scout who's visiting us in the audience and has to report back to his troop?
Absolutely. If I get an email particularly, it'd be helpful, and we'll happy to send it to him if that'll work.
Thank you.
He wouldn't do the pledge. I asked him if he'd lead the pledge, but...
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Jennifer Chong, and I'm the management analyst in the Public Works Department. I'm here today, I'm very excited to share with you some administrative updates we have made in the Public Works Department to try to streamline the process of the community reaching our administrative staff. So, there it goes. So we are very excited to roll out a new email address. It's a centralized email address that goes straight to our administrative service, our administrative assistant, and it, you know, we're hoping that this is a little bit more intuitive for the community to outreach to us if they come across a pothole or if they come across a low-hanging tree branch, that folks will be able to take pictures and send them to us to this generic publicworks@hmbcity.com email address, and then we'll be able to play operator and route it to the correct, the correct person for response. An additional adjustment that we have made is we have shifted over the 7177 phone number, so 650-726-7177, and we've made that the generic, just general line for Public Works maintenance, so all, all phone calls, we hope will get routed there. So again, we're getting a faster response time. We have designated individuals that will be picking up that phone, so that way, it's not just one person's line that's ringing, and if it's a maintenance staff that's out in the field, we're, you know, we're missing a lot of calls during the day. So we're really hoping that this adjustment will make us more accessible to the community. I wanted to take this opportunity to just add a couple additional phone numbers up there that I hope will be relevant and helpful to the community, just in regards to if it's past five or on weekends, there is still a number that you can call even when staff's not around, and if there's a sewer or a water issue, there are actually designated phone numbers for that as well. Any questions about the administrative updates from Public Works?
I was just going to say, this is a great idea, and I just want to make sure that when people call, they're not ending up in Atlanta, Georgia.
I haven't heard that complaint come through in a while, so I'm hoping that it's been taken care of. Oh, and we do have business cards, so we made generic business cards as well with the phone number and the email address, so that way, it's, it's much easier, and again, it's one space, it doesn't matter what staff is here or not, it's hopefully something that's institutionalized for, for a long time to come.
I think that's a great improvement. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. So moving right along to a solid, oh, yes, of course.
Question. Yeah, will this information as a page be put up on the website to announce it to the general public?
We can definitely do some type of...
Be nice to see that.
Yeah, it has been put up on the Public Works website, so that's been updated, but we can do a news release maybe if that's, if that's something...
That'd be great.
All right. Any, anything else?
No, I just think if we had some sort of a notice on the homepage, on the website homepage, that, that would alert people in a pretty good way. Thanks.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think like a little alert section on the homepage, just, you know, things that are really hot topics maybe.
I'll, I'll work with, I'll work with Malcolm and see where, where best we can put something on there.
Thank you.
So moving right along to a solid waste update, it's been a while, we signed the contract back in September, and I know there's been some movement, so I wanted to take this opportunity to come back and just give you an idea of what we've been doing to educate the community about their upcoming services. So as the city council is aware, the new contract will be starting in April of this, of this year. That's given us, you know, roughly four, four or five months to roll out some educational opportunities for the community to come learn about the new programs. So some things that we've been doing, we've already hosted one community workshop, and we have three new workshops coming up, and I'll talk more about that in a little bit. We've started to do presentations and audits at businesses and multifamily dwellings. We've sent out mailers, we have brochures and posters. We have an updated website from Republic Services, which will be updating again with images and to make it more graphic and hopefully more user-friendly, and we are partnering with the chamber to try to work, work with more of the businesses and have a larger outreach. So the first workshop that we had was Thursday, January 11th, which was attended by Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmember Riddick, and we had about forty attendees that came to that presentation. This picture was taken earlier in the evening, and it didn't catch some of the stragglers that came in, but we actually had very good attendance, and I was very pleased with the presentation and how the dialogue happened in that, in that workshop. The highlights of the program was definitely the upcoming food scrapping program. Folks were very excited about that, and generally, it was, folks were very interested to learn what could go in what bin and getting that clarification. We also did bring in the new carts and the food pails that all residential, residential units will be receiving, and we had a little, a chance for all of the attendees to go and check out some of the new carts and the sizes that they can be choosing from. As mentioned previously, we are scheduled to have three additional workshops, again, to allow more individuals to come and learn about these programs that we are going to be rolling out in April. They will all be held here in the TED Adcock, either in this room or in the room across the hall. We have a Tuesday night meeting, a Monday night meeting, and a Monday daytime meeting. So we're really trying to diversify the times and the days that we're outreach to folks so we can really get as many people as possible. One of these meetings will be held, will have Spanish translation, so, and will have a translated flyer that will go out to the community as well. In terms of the business side, we are having a business mixer. Again, we're working with the chamber for this, and we'll be inviting all of the businesses in Half Moon Bay to a mixer on Wednesday, March 7th, in the New Leaf Community Room, and so that's upcoming as well. And with that, we have, you know, we're doing a lot of work. We've met with the senior coast siders today, we met with Amesport Landing, we've done some audits at Pelican Point, we've been going out and trying to outreach to a lot of the businesses and residents in the area, but, you know, we really hope folks take, take advantage of this outreach period to come learn about their new services. Any questions that I can answer?
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to say, I went to that first community meeting, and I was, I learned, I learned a lot. I was amazed. I didn't know I had questions, and I got them answered. The, one of the things that I learned was that you can recycle white plastic flatware, and you cannot recycle black plastic flatware, so...
And that question came up today too, when we met with the senior coast siders about when they're purchasing their plastic utensils for their large parties, you know, which ones they should purchase so that way they can make sure the right, the right ones can go in the right bin.
Right.
It's a common question.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm trying to figure out where, I think that's the, an earlier picture with the office area for staff. So, things are moving forward and it will be sealed up in the very near future, all the windows in place, and they'll start working on drywall and all of the interior work to come. So, basically, we are at 499 calendar days for the project and utilized 359, so we've got 140 days left with substantial completion again set for the end of May, and construction completion roughly at the end of June, with an opening sometime July, late July, early August, with all the shakeout and move-in that's needed with that. And so, we've been fortunate in one respect that the dry winter has allowed us to continue to work through that time, and we're now at only 11 rain days out of 30 in the contract. So, that means things have been able to move along quite well. Questions?
No, just a comment. Wonderful tour today. The library is so fabulous.
So, I have a question. So, can a copy of this present, can a copy of this presentation be made available to a Boy Scout who's visiting us in the audience and has to report back to his troop?
Absolutely. If I get an email particularly, it'd be helpful. We'll happy to send it to him if that'll work.
Thank you.
He wouldn't do the pledge. I asked him if he'd lead the pledge, but...
Good evening, Public Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Jennifer Chong, and I am the Management Analyst in the Public Works Department. I'm here today, I'm very excited to share with you some administrative updates we have made in the Public Works Department to try to streamline the process of the community reaching our administrative staff. So, there it goes. So, we are very excited to roll out a new email address. It's a centralized email address that goes straight to our administrative service, our administrative assistant, and it, you know, we're hoping that this is a little bit more intuitive for the community to outreach to us if they come across a pothole, or if they come across a low hanging tree branch, that folks will be able to take pictures and send them to us to this generic publicworks@hmbcity.com email address, and then we'll be able to play operator and route it to the correct, the correct person for response. An additional adjustment that we have made is we have shifted over the 7177 phone number, so 650-726-7177, and we've made that the generic, just general line for Public Works maintenance. So, all phone calls, we hope, will get routed there. So, again, we're getting a faster response time. We have designated individuals that will be picking up that phone, so that way it's not just one person's line that's ringing, and if it's a maintenance staff that's out in the field, we're, you know, we're missing a lot of calls during the day. So, we're really hoping that this adjustment will make us more accessible to the community. I wanted to take this opportunity to just add a couple additional phone numbers up there that I hope will be relevant and helpful to the community, just in regards to if it's past 5:00 or on weekends, there is still a number that you can call even when staff's not around, and if there's a sewer or a water issue, there are actually designated phone numbers for that as well. Any questions about the administrative updates from Public Works?
I was just gonna say, this is a great idea, and I just want to make sure that when people call, they're not ending up in Atlanta, Georgia.
I haven't heard that complaint come through in a while, so I'm hoping that it's been taken care of. Oh, and we do have business cards. So, we made generic business cards as well with the phone number and the email address, so that way it's, it's much easier, and again, it's one space. It doesn't matter what staff is here or not. It's hopefully something that's institutionalized for, for a long time to come.
I think that's a great improvement. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. So, moving right along to a solid, oh, yes, of course.
Question. Yeah, will this information as a page be put up on the website to announce it to the general public?
We can definitely do some type of...
Be nice to see that.
Yeah, it has been put up on the Public Works website, so that's been updated, but we can do a news release maybe if that's, if that's something...
That'd be great.
All right. Any, anything else?
No, I just think if we had some sort of a notice on the homepage, on the website homepage, that, that would alert people in a pretty good way. Thanks.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think like a little alert section on the homepage, just, you know, things that are really hot topics maybe.
I'll, I'll work with, I'll work with Malcolm and see where, where best we can put something on there.
Thank you.
All right. So, moving right along to a solid waste update. It's been a while. We signed the contract back in September, and I know there's been some movement, so I wanted to take this opportunity to come back and just give you an idea of what we've been doing to educate the community about their upcoming services. So, as the City Council is aware, the new contract will be starting in April of this, of this year. That's given us, you know, roughly four, four or five months to roll out some educational opportunities for the community to come learn about the new programs. So, some things that we've been doing, we've already hosted one community workshop, and we have three new workshops coming up, and I'll talk more about that in a little bit. We've started to do presentations and audits at businesses and multifamily dwellings. We've sent out mailers. We have brochures and posters. We have an updated website from Republic Services, which will be updating again with images and to make it more graphic and hopefully more user-friendly. And we are partnering with the Chamber to try to work, work with more of the businesses and have a larger outreach. So, the first workshop that we had was Thursday, January 11th, which was attended by Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council Member Reddick, and we had about 40 attendees that came to that presentation. This picture was taken earlier in the evening, and it didn't catch some of the stragglers that came in, but we actually had very good attendance, and I was very pleased with the presentation and how the dialogue happened in that, and that workshop. The highlights of the program was definitely the upcoming food scrapping program. Folks were very excited about that, and generally, it was, folks were very interested to learn what could go in what bin and getting that clarification. We also did bring in the new carts and the food pails that all residential, residential units will be receiving, and we had a little, a chance for all of the attendees to go and check out some of the new carts and the sizes that they can be choosing from. As mentioned previously, we are scheduled to have three additional workshops, again, to allow more individuals to come and learn about these programs that we are going to be rolling out in April. They will all be held here in the TED Adcock, either in this room or in the room across the hall. We have a Tuesday night meeting, a Monday night meeting, and a Monday daytime meeting. So, we're really trying to diversify the times and the days that we're outreach to folks, so we can really get as many people as possible. One of these meetings will be held, will have Spanish translation, so, and will have a translated flyer that will go out to the community as well. In terms of the business side, we are having a business mixer. Again, we're working with the Chamber for this, and we'll be inviting all of the businesses in Half Moon Bay to a mixer on Wednesday, March 7th, in the New Leaf Community Room, and so that's upcoming as well. And with that, we have, you know, we're doing a lot of work. We've met with the senior coast siders today. We met with Amesport Landing. We've done some audits at Pelican Point. We've been going out and trying to outreach to a lot of the businesses and residents in the area, but, you know, we really hope folks take, take advantage of this outreach period to come learn about their new services. Any questions that I can answer?
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to say, I went to that first community meeting, and I was, I learned, I learned a lot. I was amazed. I didn't know I had questions, and I got them answered. The, one of the things that I learned was that you can recycle white plastic flatware, and you cannot recycle black plastic flatware, so...
And that question came up today too, when we met with the senior coast siders about when they're purchasing their plastic utensils for their large parties, you know, which ones they should purchase, so that way they can make sure the right, the right ones can go in the right bin.
Right.
It's a common question.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Good evening. This is just a quick update on the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan and the Parks Master Plan. I'm Jill Ikis. I'm the Community Development Director here, and I've been hanging out with these two plans quite busily over the last few months. The last update we did on this, I, I looked back, I think it might have been in August or September. So, we, we've been meeting in different venues recently, and we thought we'd catch you up a little bit. This is our joint website that's still up. So, the Parks Master Plan, that's the one that's leading the Bike Ped. It's a couple months ahead of it. In December, we did have that joint study session. In addition to really presenting about these two plans, this is kind of a presentation about how hard your commissions have been working. That joint study session included the Parks and Rec Commission as well as the Planning Commission, and they reviewed the very first public draft of the plan. On January 24th, the Parks and Rec Commission saw the plan again. It was revised. We had received community input, as well as the input that we got from the two commissions at the joint session, and made, made edits to it and got a final round of comments. With this one, we wanted to let you know about how the next steps are going to work, at least how we envisioned them, and we had been telling you we're gonna bring it to you for your, your approval, and of course, we still have to do CEQA on this. So, really what we'd be bringing you is confirmation that this is the plan you want us to spend some time and money and real effort to wrap up with, with that CEQA work. We're looking at scoping that right now, and it's probably on the order of an initial study mitigated negative declaration. That's pretty standard for master plans like this. That would go through the Planning Commission and then come back to you for your final approval. So, that's where that's at. We thought we would take it to you before going back to the Planning Commission with it, because you had asked specifically in October to see where we were at with the recommendations. So, we know that you're really paying attention to it, so that's why we're adding that step to the process. So, for Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan, you can see that the B-PAC has been incredibly busy. You've heard about the tour that they did on a Saturday. They've had multiple meetings all fall and through the winter. The first draft of the plan came out January 18th, and then there was a community workshop on February 8th, so just a week and a half ago. We're wrapping up, taking in community comments, as well as any commissioners' comments through Friday this week, and those can come in through the hmbo outdoors.org website. And then, with this one, we're planning to, we're actually scoping the initial study negback for this one in parallel to Parks and Rec. Obviously, we're trying to save some effort by doing that together. And we were gonna take it straight to the Planning Commission, because they've been really involved in it. They were in a couple joint study sessions, and the B-PAC is advisory to both City Council and to the Planning Commission, and because the Planning Commission has had their hands all over the local coastal land use plan, coastal access chapter, we, we thought we would go that way. But if I hear that you'd like to have us step in here with the draft plan, we, we're happy to do that as well. But this is how we were looking at proceeding with that one. And I just, we haven't done this since I've been here, and I, I've seen requests for project lists and requests for Planning Commission minutes, and we're looking at the best way to provide that to you. These are not all the things that are coming up on the Planning Commission's agenda, but I just thought maybe you'd want to know what, what we have in store for just their next few meetings, and there's, there's other items on each of these agendas. On February 27th next week, Sematyo County has offered to give a presentation on accessory dwelling units. I'm sure they would also do it for Council if that was something that you wanted to do. But we're, we're thinking this is really valuable for the Planning Commission forum, because we're, we're preparing, along with Catherine and, and folks in her shop, for a study session after that on ADUs and short-term rentals to take to the Planning Commission. Those two topics are quite interrelated, and we think it's appropriate to bring them together. So, the Sematyo County presentation, we're hoping will give some context for the subregional area of what other cities are doing and what best practices have been emerging, and then we'll dig in on the 13th with key policy questions to pose to the Planning Commission on this. And then, we have a notice of preparation meeting that we're targeting for the Hyatt Place on March 27th. That is the proposal for a hotel on the South Main Street and Highway 1 site, that big triangle across the street from the fire station. If we, if we make that timeline, what, what this will be is hosting input for what needs to be studied in the EIR. Of course, the EIR has a scope of work that you approved with the consultant, but detailing that out is something that the community would like to participate in, the Planning Commission would as well. I understand that we haven't done scoping sessions before the Planning Commission. They're usually done during the day. In the past, this has been my practice, is to have them hosted with the Planning Commission, so we're gonna give this a go, and I really recommend it. So, just wanted you to know that that's on the horizon, and I'll be talking to you in a little bit about some other things that we're working on. And I think that's, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Jill.
I just wanted to say that various people have said, so why do we have to have a Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan? Why do we have to have a Parks Master Plan? And the reason is to be in a, a good place to compete for, for grants, to implement our desired projects. Most grant programs, especially state grant programs, require you to have an adopted plan, and that way, they know that if you have an adopted plan, that means you've gone out to the public, taken public input, and have reached some consensus in your community as to your priorities. People don't want to just hand out money willy-nilly for planning projects or implementation projects and haven't gone through a vetting process. So, we've, we've gone through this very detailed process with two committees and held lots of workshops that Jill's managed beautifully and her staff, and I think we're gonna be in a good place. There's a Parks Bond on the ballot in June, a state Parks Bond for $4 billion. And by having plans, we'll be able to better compete as a community to get some of those dollars. So, that's one of the reasons the, the City Council authorized some expenditures to get these plans done. And I, I totally think it's a great idea to hold a public scoping meeting for the hotel project and get it in front of the Planning Commission, and hopefully that'll become a, a standard practice. So, thank you for taking the initiative on that. Really appreciate all your good work.
Jill, can you just say a little bit about what a CEQA process for a big project like the Parks Master Plan, how does that, is that gonna be individual, park by park CEQA, or just the general idea of what the city is planning to do?
So, with master plans, because we don't have anything close to construction documents or even a vision for individual parks beyond the conceptual vision that you've, you've seen, it's an overview of what kinds of impacts we need to be looking for. It evaluates where things are pretty speci, you know, we may have some things that are specific, because we have existing parks that are proposed to be rehabilitated, for example. So, in those areas, we can be quite specific. But for new parks or for, like the community park, that concept where we're thinking about two different locations, CEQA does not have to get too detailed in that area, but it can guide us for going deeper in the future. Unfortunately, because we don't have our, we don't have a CEQA document to tear off of from our general plan, that's something we'll have in the future, we do need to have this stand on its own for each of these. Now, for the Bike Ped Plan, a number of Bike Ped facilities are actually exempt from CEQA. So, some of those things can be covered in a, a very easy way, because they're within existing paved rights of way, and they really aren't anticipated to have any kinds of impacts. Other things that we've identified in the Bike Ped Plan where we know there could be environmental impacts, we've identified them as studies. We haven't mapped out alignments, because it's, it's premature to do that. So, I think you'll see that the document for these is, is gonna have to be really flexible. It'll get more detailed where we know site-specific, less where we don't.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jill. Any other city manager updates? Okay, we move on to public forum. First up, Tanya Beat.
Good evening. My name is Tanya Beat. I am the interim director for a number of commissions, the Domestic Violence Council, the LGBTQ Commission, but I'm here tonight to represent the Commission on the Status of Women. We invite you, as well as Half Moon Bay residents, to attend our special and first time to do or organize a women's leadership conference. I ask you to earmark March 24th as a day to not schedule any retreats, and instead, come and celebrate and talk about women's issues, looking at professional development in leadership for women. This conference is for all women and teens. In addition, our longtime Women's Hall of Fame will be right after the conference. Now, the Women's Hall of Fame has been around for over 30 years. We've recognized many, many different women. This year, we actually have two coastside women that we are celebrating. One of them is Erin Tormey, the creator of the Coastside Farmers Markets, and the other is Naomi Patridge. I don't know if maybe you might know her. Anyway, we are very pleased to recognize them, as well as our third honorary, Kalima Saludin, from Daly City, who, her children went to Pacific, Pacifica School District as well. So, we would love for you to be able to attend. I brought flyers for you to take back to City Hall. I'll leave some here. I have business cards too, and information if anyone else wants to learn how to participate or learn how to register. We would love for the coastside to come on over the hill and join us, and if transportation's an issue, I would love to start that conversation with people. So, thank you. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Tanya.
Thank you.
As long as you're leaving all that great information. Yeah, that's, that's good. Thank you.
Next up is Paul Gregoriev.
Good evening, Councilmembers and staff. I, I wanted to say a few words to you tonight about emergency communications. This was a topic that was recently brought up at the regular coffee with the Councilmembers session, and I reflected about it a bit and wanted to talk a minute about two kinds of emergency communication, communication about emergencies and communication during emergencies. On the first one, communication about emergencies, I, I want to talk briefly about the Sheriff's System called SMC Alert, which many of you probably participate in. I know I do, and many of the audience as well. This system, which many of us rely on, seems to be in danger of failing to deal with the most common type of emergency that faces coastside residents, and I'll give you two guesses as to what it is. You got it. It's the total closure of Route 92 for hours on end, which of course makes it difficult to access emergency services, deal with personal emergencies, and the like. And we recently, of course, had this major closure for several hours, which unfortunately didn't hit SMC Alert for at least three hours. So, residents were headed on out 92 and then just stuck there for long periods of time. I heard the, our regional rep for the Office of Emergency Services, which is part of the Sheriff's Department, say that OES would no longer be reporting traffic accidents over SMC Alert, and that really bothered me. It worried me. I would recommend that the Council look into that, and if that's the case, try to reverse that decision for the good of all of us here on the coastside. The, the second thing I wanted to mention was communication during emergencies, and here, I'm worried about the increasingly frequent joint failures of both phone and internet communications to the coastside, when the shared AT&amp;T Comcast cable that comes up to us from the south just goes down. Sometimes, it's taken down by a front-end loader or a traffic accident or for an unexplained cause. But I suggest that the city investigate the problem and mandate, if possible, the creation of a backup, a backup cable system to the one that runs up from the south to HMB, perhaps coming down from Pacifica to the north. We need good emergency communication during emergencies, and we need it soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. Next, we'll move on to consent calendar. Does anybody want to pull anything?
I move to approve. Consent calendar items 1A, 1B, 1C, and 1D.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Consent.
Consent calendar passes. Ordinances and public hearings. I don't think we have any. Resolutions and staff reports. We have a report from our Community Development Director on the local coastal program update.
Thank you, Mayor. I am really happy to be here to get you updated on this, and frankly, we're, we've been working so hard, and I know we haven't been out and about with it for a while. And so, we're gonna get into the nitty-gritty here, and I look forward to your, your feedback. So, literally, I'm gonna show you where each chapter is, so you have a, have a little sense of confidence about that. I'm gonna give the, the note that these are all admin drafts. None of these are public documents, but I hope you can trust me that they are safeguarded and we're working on them. Okay, we'll talk about the resources that we're using to get this important project done, the approach that's we're covering for addressing the development chapter, as confirmed by the Planning Commission, and some next steps. Now, we've talked about this so many times. I wasn't planning to give a big overview of this project and how long it's been going and the impetus for it, et cetera, et cetera. So, I thought we'd just jump right in. And first up, go right into where we are with these chapters. So, hopefully, you will notice in these two slides that we've actually reconfigured the entire document back to a format that is near and dear to you, the 10 chapters that you have. And what you're seeing is, blue is where we've really made the most progress. Green is really actively on my desk and in other people's computers right now, and yellow is something that has a contingency about it, so I'll go through those. We don't get credit for this one, but it's, it is really important. The, the LUP refers out to the housing element, and that's that bright blue one, number five, because it was certified in 2015. So, it's just a nice thing, but... And I have to say, I love being, working in a community development department with a certified housing element. It's very helpful. Okay, so, the other blue ones that you see in, on this slide, and then we'll, we'll look at the next one, Coastal Access and Recreation, Coastal Hazards, and then Chapters 6 and 7, Cultural Resources, and Scenic and Visual Resources. Those chapters were put into Planning Commission working draft formats. They were reviewed by the Planning Commission over summer. We even had a couple joint sessions. One of them was with the Parks Commission, and the other was with the B-PAC, and that was, both of those joint sessions were on Coastal Access and Rec. We concluded the Planning Commission's input on... We concluded the Planning Commission's input on those four chapters in September, and we can wrap up those chapters, but I need to wait until development's done to make sure we're consistent. So, this is something that you'll hear from the Planning Commission a lot and from me is this, there's some iterativeness about what we have to do with this work. Okay, so now the green ones. Some of these are easier than the others. The introduction is not a big deal. The framework chapter, though, is a really big deal. It's a complicated chapter, and it is in an admin draft form that is being reviewed by our consultant. And our consultant actually prepared a lot of the support for that document in a white paper that I'll talk about in a minute. But this is really how you set the stage for telling the story about the original approval of the LCP and what it envisioned, what has happened since then in terms of growth and other changes, physical changes in the environment, different approaches to policy, and how the city's perspective has changed, also the direction that we've received through this process, so to guide how we would do an update to this document, especially in terms of changing policies. Others in the green zone are such because agriculture is in pretty good shape, and Appendix A is really important, and it seems trivial, but researching every amendment that has been approved by the Coastal Commission for the OUP since 1996 and having a really accurate record of that took some work, and we had help from, we had an original amount of work done from our original consultant. It was not complete. We started to discover that when we were working with our consultant, and I will tell you also about a staff person who's taken that on, and she's got our amendment list confirmed by Coastal Commission staff. So, that was very helpful. And development is the thing that we're spending most of our time on right now. So, let's go to the yellow ones. So, natural resources. This is going to include biological resources and hydrological resources, so your water quality and water systems and all of the habitats. This relates to the map that we've talked about and that you've approved work for with it, with a consultant. And it's just been really hard to get it going. They're working very hard on it now, but it took a while to get the base map data. I think I wrote about it in the staff report. The great thing about the data is it's excellent. It's as good as we could get, and it was free because we got it from San Mateo County, and it would just be a darn shame to have not used it. So, unfortunately, it wasn't ready in August, and it took well into November, and then I think one of the mappers got quite sick over the holidays, and it's just, he's now cranking on it, but it's taken longer than we wanted. So, I'll talk to you about how we're going to approach making some traction on that one in a minute here. And then, public works is, we've actually got an admin draft of that chapter, but we can't finish it until development's in pretty good shape because it's dependent on build-out analysis. So, I'm not nervous about that one. It's just got to be sequenced. And then we have a few other appendices that will be slipped in at the end, and we've already got a lot of record on it. Your engagement on this project is exemplary. There's so much community work that's gone into it, and Coastal Commission staff has participated in some of that. They've also given me a lot of feedback about it, and we just want to feature that in its own appendix. We think that's actually stronger than putting it into a chapter. So, that's where all those chapters are. And let's look at our resources. So, we, you know, the prime planning consultant resigned from this project last spring, and we really didn't have a lot of hands on it for a little while. And then we had this great opportunity. We were able to bring in Charles Lester as our policy consultant, and we also were able to bring in Huffman Broadway Group as our environmental consultant for that environmental work. That went too far. Hold on. Uh-oh. Did I miss a slide? They're in the wrong order. Sorry about that. So, those are the first two bullets. So, the next two that are bolded, it's what I'm looking for now, for some more help going forward. There are, we just aren't going to be able to produce a plan in-house with Word or InDesign. We don't have the right kind of GIS and that kind of thing. So, we're going to have a planning consultant do the document, the actual document production at the end. It's not going to be a, I don't see this as a really big contract. And this is really limited work. We're doing all the writing with this little team that we have. So, this is really people helping us make it look like a plan when we're done. And I've been talking to, I've talked to a couple consultants that I know well, that I like to work with, and I'm just trying to find the one that's going to work more like an extension of staff and be really flexible with us and be affordable and be good. And then, of course, we're going to need the technical analyses that we can't do in-house, and traffic in particular, and there's a few others that Coastal Commission staff will give us some guidance for. Then I wanted to talk briefly about another resource, and hopefully, you've noticed this if you've popped into City Hall through the front door. You'll see that people have moved their workstations around, and we've got the front workstation staff full-time, and that's the actual public counter. We have a little kiosk out in the Al Cove outside where I cannot believe how many people pop in there and grab a bus schedule, and then they don't come into City Hall to do that. It's been great for them, and it's available to them on the weekends and evenings. So, you can kind of see it, it just looks a little bit different. But then you'll see people are new people, new faces, and folks have moved around. So, we've hired two planners. We've hired our senior planner that I think a couple of you met, Doug Garrison, who has vast experience with Sequo. And he has, per the budget intention, his first day of work, I gave him my entire cannabis file. So, that was incredibly helpful. And then, we were able to hire Brittany Cosolino. She is an experienced planner from having worked for the Coastal Commission in San Diego, and I didn't have a position for her, but we were able to bring her in through the Standing M Group contract that we have. Convinced my buddy at M Group to hire her, and he was happy, too. She's fabulous, and she's the one doing all this extra research, which has greased the skids for us. It's been wonderful. Budget looks fine. We're going to go through mid-year budget and dig into it deeper. I did not spend a lot of time in advance of this meeting. I've been paying attention to it. I don't know exactly the numbers, but I think we have the resources we need. Oops. Somehow that mixed up. Coastal Commission staff has been a resource, for sure. Also, the grant that we, we've had three grants. Two of them are complete. The third one, though, for $85,000, we just received approval of our grant amendment, and that grant is now going to cover the Huffman Broadway scope in whole. San Mateo County, their map data, of course. The other thing that we have from San Mateo County is that their LCP was updated within recent enough times, but they've got a lot of data from their Connect the Coastside work, and their staff is pretty experienced. So, they are a really useful resource from my perspective. So, that's how we're running this project at this point. And what, when we were last out and about in October and November, it was in October that Dr. Lester presented his white paper on updating the plan and the background on policy and growth management, and that was a really detailed paper. It's on our website. The presentation was very well-received, and the intent for that paper was to be multipurpose so that it could actually inform a lot of the writing for the framework for the document. And then, at the next meeting, I think it was November 14th, and it was in your packet, we worked with the Planning Commission on some basic tenants for directing land use decisions. This isn't, I'm not intending to present this as something for the feedback. It's really not a part of the update, but I do think it's important for you to see how it's working its way through the entire process, from you directing us on the downtown core area to some assumptions that staff has floated out to the Planning Commission and then them giving us feedback on that, and we're literally tuning policies to that feedback. The basis of it is, this was also a Planning Commission construct. They were seeing downtown in three pieces, kind of the heritage old downtown, a north downtown, and a south downtown, and it's actually very helpful because the policies are a little bit different for these different areas. The whole construct of the plan is if it's in the town center, we have kind of one approach, and if it's outside of it, there's another approach. They gave us feedback on how to, using that to take a look at the fully built-out, partially built-out, and substantially undeveloped PUDs. So, you're going to see that also come through. And these were, I'm just clicking through, I'm not intending to present this, but this was kind of the way they looked at different types of land uses in different conditions in different parts of town, and kind of the pros and cons, the things we need to be protective of. There's some real benefits, for example, working in the town center with regards to lower VMT and things like that, and other kind of fragile conditions that we've identified through the sea level rise assessment. So, it's, there's many, many layers to these simple little tables. We got great feedback from them. So, that's what we're sifting through, and that was only residential, commercial, and agriculture. I've done this also with public service uses, and that's been really helpful, too. So, what, we heard last meeting from you, the notion of a Planning Commission Subcommittee, and that was something that staff had asked the Planning Commission to consider last April at their retreat, and then we kind of hinted at it again at another meeting, and they just really weren't seeing that they needed to do it. I think it's because we were able to bring them some of the easier sections of the LUP without having to really pull apart on the policies. They were much clearer direction, easier to follow from the G-PAC, knew what to do. I brought it up at their meeting a week ago. They said, yes, go ahead and put it on our next agenda. So, it will be on their agenda next week, and we will ask them to form a two-person Subcommittee who can more flexibly meet with staff so we can vet some of the things that we've been working on, in particular, the development chapter, because it's pretty complex. We also know that we're going to need to meet with stakeholders again. We've done a lot of stakeholder work, but once we are seen where this is going, in particular, interest groups that we've met with in the past, as well as property owners who are really concerned and trying to stay with the process, which is a real commitment for them. At that point, once we have, I see the development chapter and the framework chapters coming out together. They need to, one informs the other, and we would go into study sessions. In the background, we'll be finishing up natural resources and preparing public works. So, it's going to be in kind of two steps. Some key meetings coming up over the next week or two with both the policy consultant and the environmental consultant, working really hard on getting milestones from them relative to each other and everyone else's schedules. So, I'm hoping for an April 10th meeting with the Planning Commission. I'm not comfortable being more committal to it than that because I know they have a lot of work to do, and I have a lot of work to do, but we're plowing through it. So, that is your update. I'm happy to answer questions, and I'm really excited about the progress you're making.
Thank you, Jill, for following up on this Subcommittee idea as a way to get the LCP going faster. I really appreciate it, and at the next meeting, if you can plug away and say we do need two-person subcommittees to write, I would appreciate very much. Thank you.
I just want to say, I think staff's doing a great job. Thank you, Jill. You seem to inhabit this subject. And keeping it together. It's very complex, very complicated, and I think you're doing a great job.
So, I agree. So, thank you for your presentation. Can we refer back to the beginning? You had a timeline. I think you showed some dates when things happened and when they will happen, and I may have misunderstood something. Or whatever that was, that was cool. I think it was, well, maybe I'll, I'm going from memory, but I thought you said something in the beginning about the update going to the Planning Commission before it goes to the council, something like that? Am I able to hear that correctly?
Is that a staff report as opposed to the presentation you're talking about?
It might be. So, I guess, as long as we have, I just want to make sure I keep my finger on the pulse of what goes to the Planning Commission so we can just follow along and coach or work with our Planning Commissioners. It's really important to me to be, keep my finger on the pulse of that as well. So, thank you.
As long as you have that up there, what's AQ?
We don't have traffic here in Half Moon Bay, I don't think. Jill, thank you. It was a wonderful presentation. God bless you, and I'm so glad you are doing this work and not somebody else. And certainly not me.
I'll second what the mayor just said.
Okay. I guess the next item is future agenda topics. Does anyone have anything?
Doesn't have to be an agenda item, but it could be an agenda item for open discussion. Maybe it's better, but at least as a request for a city manager update, as we move forward with plans for the homeless population to communicate with the public and with the council, how that will be handled with dignity and properly, with support from the county, and those updates regularly up to that event and thereafter. I know we did it at the last meeting, but as that develops, I just want to make sure that's very well discussed and expressed. Thank you.
I know that the city manager mentioned to me today that, so they've triggered the cold weather response for the homeless and signing up people for shelters and things because we're headed into an extended cold period, and it looks like it's going to be a little bit wet, too. So, we're taking care of them.
I think we need two people to agendize something, so I will concur with Council Member Kowalczek that we really need to agendize the issue about how we're dealing with the homeless encampment behind Safeway.
Thank you. Thank you. City Council reports. Can't believe it, but this meeting is adjourned.